Good morning, everybody. Thank you all so much for being here this morning for a meeting, the public hearing of the budget and the Board of E&amp;A. Stephanie, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Kruse.
Here.
Comptroller Green, here. President Reed.
Here.
Okay. All members being present. This meeting is being held in accordance with the provisions of Ordinance 49318 that was approved March 2nd, 1959, which states in part, "The Board of Estimate and Apportionment shall review the proposed budget with the heads of departments and other agencies and hold at least one public hearing thereon after giving at least five days' notice in the City Journal." The required notice was published in the St. Louis City Journal on Tuesday, April the 10th and the 17th, and in the Post-Dispatch on Friday, April the 6th, 2018. So that constitutes our calling of this meeting. I could just say a couple of things about this budget, and I think a lot of you have hopefully seen the budget online. It looks like you have from the posts and the emails that I have been getting. And, you know, every year, I think, the budget, we try to make the budget reflect the things that we want to accomplish in our city, and we've tried to do that this year as well. This is just the beginning point on the budget. Of course, after this meeting, it will go, and then we'll have a meeting on Monday for E&amp;A, which hopefully we'll send it over to the Board of Aldermen, and then there'll be a month-long process of public hearings about the various departments in the budget. So there'll be many opportunities for you to have more input on the budget. And then, the budget has to be passed by the Board of Alder, balanced and passed, I might add, by the 1st of July, which is the beginning of the fiscal year. So for the next two months, two months and a week, we'll be going through this process of taking a look at the budget and figuring out what kinds of things we want to do. I do want to note that we tried this year, and to, I'm looking for my notes here in my phone, but we tried this year to include some things in the budget that had not really been there before or had not been there to the same extent. And so, one of the things that I'm sure you saw in the budget is that we have $3.7 million for demolition of derelict buildings. We have more money for affordable housing in the budget this year, $5,750,000. We have a new mediation program in the budget this year, which is something the Board of Aldermen passed and called on us to establish last year. That's a couple hundred thousand dollars. We have more money in the budget for outreach for homeless services. We have fully funded the Ward Capital Improvement budgets this year, which has been something that hasn't been done in about 10 years. We have more money for youth jobs. We have air conditioning at the Medium Security Institution, MSI, which will go in here towards the end of May, roughly Memorial Day to Labor Day. We have a new cadet recruiting program for police officers. We have social workers. We have more recreation programs, and we have money for the state audit, excuse me, which has just begun, and it was really at the request of citizens, but also at the request of the Board of Aldermen. I personally am looking forward to the results of the audit. I think going through an audit process may help us decide how to do things better. The only sticking point on the audit is that we have to pay for it, and it's, you know, a million and a half to $2 million. And so, there is, we're planning to pay for it over a couple of years, and so there is money in the budget to do that. So, that's really just a few highlights that I wanted to point out. Paul Payne, excuse me, Paul Payne, the Budget Director, Paul, where are you? Did you leave me already? Oh, there you go. Paul Payne is here, and he'll actually present the budget, and then you'll have an opportunity to make comments or ask questions if you haven't already signed up to do so. There's a sign-up sheet up here.
Paul?
It wasn't planned on for the presentation.
Oh, well, I'm mistaken. Paul's not doing the presentation this morning.
Yeah, there'll be two other, so, you know, typically, there are two other presentations. I made the presentation this past Wednesday. There'll also be a presentation of the Ways and Means Committee, and they typically also have an evening meeting of the Ways and Means Committee, so there'll be two other opportunities to see that. Also, both the presentation as well as the budget documents are posted online on the city's website.
Thank you for that correction there, Paul.
Yeah.
That's the sign-up sheet that we're moving, gonna move over to the corner there in case, in case you didn't get an opportunity to sign up. You can, you can do it now.
One, there are hard copies of the presentation as well on the counter up front here.
Sure. If you want to take one of those, that's fine. Okay. Okay, so, Stephanie, let's give people a minute to sign up.
You can ask if anybody else wants to sign in, and then Stephanie has to sign in.
Right. Thank you, Madam Comptroller. So if you, if you want to sign up, there's the clipboard right there, and Stephanie will give you a second to get the copies here, and then Stephanie will call the first speaker. If we could limit your comments to two minutes, I think that will give time for more people to speak. How many people are signed up?
There's about 14 right now.
Okay. So, so I think that, that will, if you can do that, fine. We, we want to hear from you, but if you can keep your comments concise, that would be very helpful.
Can the Comptroller make a quick statement?
President Reed?
Yes, I just want to start by thanking everybody for coming out today for this public testimony. Out of all the years I've been, I've served on the Board of E&amp;A, this is by far the largest turnout I've ever seen, which is very, very encouraging because it tells me that people are engaged, and they're, they're looking at the budget, and they're coming out and giving their honest opinion about what they'd like to see. It makes a difference when you show up, so I cannot thank you all for showing up, but again, this is the largest turnout I've seen for the public testimony before the Board of E&amp;A. When the board bill gets over to the Board of Aldermen, we will, like the mayor noted, we will hold public testimony over there, and I'm also going to speak to the Chairman of Ways and Means and request that we have at least two public hearings out in the community somewhere so that it's, it's easier for you to get to, and they are done in the evening because typically those meetings are 10 o'clock in the morning. It's very difficult for people to get off work and everything else to make it there. So we want to try to make it as convenient for you as possible to let your voices be heard. Also, take time, if you're not on Nextdoor, take time to get connected to Nextdoor and send your comments and things in there. That, that all helps. We will be collecting those comments and assure, and making sure that we get them to the Board so the Board of Aldermen, when they're reviewing the budget, they will also have a note and a comment in there from you. So thanks again for coming out this morning.
Stephanie, you want to go ahead and get the list so we can hear from our people who want to make comment this morning? And I also want to say thank you for coming out, and we look forward to hearing you on the budget.
First, we have Derek Neuner.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, President Reed, Comptroller. Thank you all for being here and allowing us to speak. I wanted to voice-
Would you give us your name and tell us what neighborhood you're from or something like that?
Yeah, my name's Derek Neuner. I'm from the Princeton Heights neighborhood. I'm a member of the Princeton Heights Neighborhood Association, a board member, although today I'm representing myself in an unofficial capacity. But I wanted to speak about the proposed cut to the Neighborhood Stabilization Office. When we receive complaints at our neighborhood meetings, our monthly meetings, I can't speak highly enough about Kathy Savage and the work that she does to address those, and I know that both of you as Aldermen and former Alderwoman understand the importance of that office. Looking at the cut of about $800,000, it seems to me to be a small cut in a large budget, but I don't pretend to tell you how to fix that. But we, I was looking over the, assigning two per district. District 1 is Crondolet, Holly Hills, Boulevard Heights, Princeton Heights, Bevo Mills, and part of Southampton and Dutchtown. It seems to me to be a rather large and fairly heavy, heavily populated area to have, to cut those positions out. Part of your stated goals in the budget are to, obviously, provide safe neighborhoods and increase public safety, as well as have a good and effective and accountable government. And I truly believe that Kathy is the face of the city government to us. Yes, the Aldermen come to our meetings to speak about what is going on, but Kathy's the one who can report about the Citizen Service Bureau, the various complaints, whether it's nuisances or vacant properties, and she's really the one that relays what the government is doing about them. She's already overworked, in my opinion. I think that, you know, this, the Nextdoor and Citizen Service Bureau are great and great accountable ways for the government to be in front of us, but it also leads to a lot of complaints. And so, I just wanted to get up here and voice my opposition to that cut and hope that perhaps you could find some way to, to keep that office fully funded at its current level. It's a little disheartening to me that we still haven't had a citywide conversation about TIF reform and tax reform. I understand the benefits of those development projects, but when we're looking at an office that is day-to-day interacting with the citizens, being reduced by half, it seems to me that there should be somewhere in the budget that we could keep that, at least at its current level, so that we have somebody that we can deal with directly to get our problems addressed. So, thank you.
Thanks for your, thanks for your comments. And, you know, as I mentioned at the beginning of this, this is the beginning of the budget process, and certainly, there is, the pot of money is only this big, but we, you know, if there are priorities that we need to cut somewhere else, well, then, you know, we'll have to figure that out. So.
Reverend Alan Lyles.
I'm here just for the NSO officer that would, I NSO officer we really need, because I'm the president of the Weed and Seed Meet, and we have community meet, and the people need to be helped, and that's what, that's what I'm here for, that support. And anything that y'all could do to make it better, that's what we want, and we give thanks for that in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Chris Wilcox.
Good morning.
So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Chris Wilcox. I am a practicum student for Community Builders Network of Metro St. Louis. Together with over 30 partners, we help form the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Coalition to support the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in all it does to expand equity and advance the supply of safe, high-quality, energy-efficient, and accessible homes and homeless services to the residents of St. Louis. For these reasons, our Coalition of Diverse Partners requests that, in addition to the $5 million minimum, that $2 million be invested from, in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund from the use tax revenues passed from Proposition 1 last spring. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund addresses many of the everyday needs of St. Louis residents and advances the goals outlined in the Ferguson Commission Report. Over 28% of African-American families alone spend more than half of their income on rent. More than 1 in 5 students of St. Louis public schools are from families who are housing insecure, which undercuts children's ability to learn and grow. We understand that the city's needs are complex, and there aren't enough resources to address everything that we'd like to. As the use taxes grown, it has gone to advance public safety and demolition of St. Louis's high-volume of vacant buildings. We believe the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is complementary to these goals. It's been found that housing, that affordable housing can reduce crime in economically depressed neighborhoods and increase property values that expand the tax base. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund is also a good investment for the city. Every dollar it spends on home construction and major rehabilitation is matched by $17 from other sources. Many of its loans to developers and homeowners are repayable, replenishing funds over time. Expanding the Affordable Housing Trust Fund can make substantial down payment on solving the problems we all agree are important for the city's future. There is no time better than now to preserve affordability and bolster the development of our communities. With 53% decline in funding from the federal CDBG and Home Program over the last 15 years and the loss of Lytech from the state, it's more important than ever that the city is ready to fill in these gaps. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund is a flexible, local, and powerful tool that can empower us to create equitable communities we all want to live in. Investing an additional $2 million in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund now gives us the opportunity to take the future into our own hands and ensure that it's competitive, vibrant, and inclusive. So, thank you for your service to the city of St. Louis and for giving me the opportunity to speak about our coalition's vision.
Thank you, Chris.
Dan Duncan, Fountain Park. Thank you for your time, and I don't envy the difficult decisions you have to make. I love St. Louis. We have so many great, strong neighborhoods, so I'm here to speak specifically about the wonderful neighborhood we have in Fountain Park, this great workforce neighborhood. We supply the staff for hospitals and schools in the area. We have students coming from every direction, Harastow and Rankin, Umsul, Washu. So it's just important that we maintain a good, safe place that people look forward to coming home to, and so, I know everyone, you probably, your phones are ringing off the hook about the NSO, NIS issue. I'd be remiss if I didn't address that. We've had to share an officer for a while, and now we finally have a great one in Wayne, Chavette Wayne Jones. So appreciate that service, and we'd like to keep that. But in general, any funds that we can, any resources that we can keep in the 18th Ward, we've looked forward to reinvestment for quite some time, so we definitely don't want to lose anything. And you have a strong citizen involvement, so we just, we appreciate any support you can provide, so, thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan.
Allison Hillman.
My name is Allison Hillman, and I am the Vice President of Benton Park West Neighborhood Association. I represent homeowners, businesses, and renters, which make up the gorgeous cloth that is South City. Barb Potts is an essential part of that tapestry. When I heard you had proposed to cut, cut the Neighborhood Stabilization budget in half, I was perplexed, befuddled. Numerous times, I've answered the question, what does Barb Potts do? While she is employed by your office, Madam Mayor, I personally and specifically associate her with the police, public safety, and is the right hand of my Alderman. Every day, we hear the call to fill the vacancies of police officers. These officers are picking up the slack to a degree where they get to know our neighbors. They take care of derelict things our officers just don't have time for. Why on earth would we think that this was an appropriate option to balance the budget? When I need to cut corners at my home, I do not cut my car insurance with the thoughts. I don't use it. It's just a small amount, anyway. That's ludicrous. When the mayor's office first optioned to reassign Barb Potts last month, the neighborhood I live in made their opinion known loudly, as did many neighborhoods around the city regarding their own stabilization officers. It was brought to my attention various officers didn't approve of their NSOs. That doesn't warrant a budget cut. It does, however, warrant a look into whether that is a personality clash or a performance issue. If it's a personality clash, it is time for some to exercise professionalism and just do their job of serving our city. If it's a performance issue, let's coach and retrain, let's be leaders, not bosses, and find someone to better fill that role. The city cannot afford to lose the Barb Potts', Christian Sellers, Ron Coleman, Barbara Graham, Chavette Wayne Jones, Christie Boyd's. These are the backbone of our public safety. Their literal title tells what they bring to the table: Neighborhood stabilization, neighborhood improvement. Is that something we can afford to cut in St. Louis? We need it now more than ever. I'm a volunteer public servant. In this role, I've learned what tools and stakeholders I have to help make my neighborhood stable. District 3 has lowered crime in the last two years. That doesn't mean Barb Potts' work is done. It has only just begun. I could give you specific stories, but like you said, Madam Mayor, your inbox is blowing up. I know your voicemails are, and postmarked messages are on their way. It would be detrimental to my neighbors to lose or even spread her more thin than she already is. This isn't just about Barb Potts, to me. Our neighbors are going to suffer. Neighborhoods will absolutely suffer. I implore you to find the money to keep this cut from happening. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, Allison, could, could I ask you, do you have a, do you have suggestions? Are there things that you'd like for us to, you know, cut to add?
I've been looking at, I've been looking, Madam Mayor, I've been looking at this budget for about 12 hours.
Okay. Well, you'll, you'll probably come up with some things later, then.
I'll email you.
Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Tom Burnham.
I'm not trying to look cool. I had cataract surgery yesterday, and I'm dealing with a lot of clear.
You're cool, Tom.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tom Burnham. I'm employed by Peter &amp; Paul Community Services since 1985, and I wanted to speak about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, going back to the days of Graham versus Shamel, and being a charter member of the City Continuum of Care, being part of those meetings going back to 1986. The creation of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund was the first, in fact, it's the only designated stream of revenue from the city that comes into homeless services. The goal was for a minimum of $5 million to be devoted to these causes. That has been affected by both inflation, and it has also been affected simply because it hasn't been fully funded for at least four, maybe five years. I would like to see increased funding above the $5 million. This past winter, I, everyone knows that there were two people who died of exposure. The, the true fatality rate is much higher. The homeless services network is a portal into drug treatment and mental health services, and there were many more deaths to drug overdoses because people were not able to get into shelter and access those services. Lives are literally at stake, and this needs to be a higher priority. In the last several years, it's not just new life that has closed. Salvation Army closed their Harbor Light Emergency Shelter. Shalom House, which housed mentally ill women with both emergency shelter and transitional housing, closed. So we have not, we have seen a net loss of hundreds of shelter beds in recent years. Biddlehouse is certainly a help, but it is not the answer. Personally, I'll tell you, I think we could use another 200 shelter beds to meet the current need. Again, lives are literally at stake, and the city needs to make this a higher priority. I'll also say that I agree with those, the Neighborhood Stabilization Officers is the first point of contact. They do tremendous work. I've worked with many of them over the years. They follow up with crime victims, and they are where, they are the main point of contact for a lot of citizens, and it would be a shame if we lost, if we, if we were to have that number. It's a real critical issue. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Tom, thank you. And if I could just say, thank you for your partnership with the city. We know how important Peter &amp; Paul is, and we know you're at Biddlehouse all the time, and we appreciate that. And I think you probably heard me say earlier that you're correct, it's been a number of years, I'm not sure if it's four, five, six, seven, but it's been a number of years since the city has fully funded the $5 million into affordable housing. This year, in this budget, is $5.5 million of new money, and there's $275,000 or $250,000 left over from last year. I know that's not what you're asking for, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that we are, we are putting more money there, and we are really also working hard to try to get some of our partners in the region to help us, to help, help us, help our, our residents. City government can't do it all, and so, so we are looking, hoping and looking forward to having more help.
Well, we have also been charter members of St. Louis County's Continuum of Care. I've been active since last June in the creation of the St. Louis Area Regional Council on Homelessness, which is basically something I've been advocating for, for years. A car with one flat tire still isn't going anywhere. If we did everything perfect on this side of the river and ignored the east side, we still wouldn't get it right. It is unfortunately terribly balkanized to have so many separate continuums of care. We do not have one regional perspective on the issue of homelessness and low-income housing. And on the point of low-income housing, I want to say, when, when you talk about it in terms of the budget, the people that I serve are not even part of that conversation. I'm talking about truly affordable housing for very low-income people. We spent five years searching for a location for our permanent supportive housing project. We need the political will to create single-room occupancy housing in a large scale, and it needs to be across the region. The private sector used to provide this, and it was eased out. I mean, going back 50 years ago, there were probably 3,000 units of single-room occupancy housing in the form of residential hotels and rooming houses. And there was a, the idea was we were going to clean up Skid Row, and it was kind of throwing the baby out with the bathwater. We need the will to allow the private sector, I do not expect the government to do that, but the private sector should be allowed to create single-room occupancy housing, and those folks should be partnering with agencies like Places for People, like St. Patrick Center, like BJC, and Peter &amp; Paul Community Services to do the supportive services. So many of the people who are homeless are employed, they have income, but they're making less than $1,200 a month before taxes, and the median rent in the city is something like $650 a month. They simply can't afford it. The Mark Twain Hotel has about 200 units. It's about $500 a month for a room at the Mark Twain Hotel, and there's a waiting list to get in there. Again, that was all private-sector housing. There was no government support going into those residential hotels and rooming houses. It's a category of housing that we eliminated without making any kind of provision for the population that utilized it, and that's a part of the discussion of homelessness that is almost never spoken.
Right. Thank you for, thank you for that.
Philip Weeks.
Thank you for having this discussion and listening to the general public. There are a couple of things that I'd like to ask. Being here and seeing the concern in the audience, and knowing how you do the appropriations, how it's submitted to the city and the Board of Aldermen, consider passing the bill that you submit to them through the E&amp;A. I'm wondering, will you consider amending the bill after you submit it because there is a large concern here, and these are only-
It likely will be amended. I mean, it's, every year, it's amended. We submit it to the Board of Aldermen, the Board of Aldermen does a month of hearings, and they suggest cuts, and they suggest adds, and then, yeah. So it, it's likely that it, it'd be very unusual if it weren't amended.
Right. From my understanding, the Board of Aldermen can only decrease the amount that's allocated. So I'm wondering if you're willing to reallocate money from particular departments to other departments?
We, we do that every year.
Okay, great. The reason why I'm asking is, my name is Philip Weeks. I think I introduced myself. I'm a resident of the 15th Ward. I'm a member of a number of different organizations and community organizations, which I think do fabulous work in the city. We've seen Pot Bangers, we've seen Winter Outreach doing wonderful jobs here. You know, they're unpaid, they do it because they care. So- So what I'd like to say is that, I, I've had my own project. In July, July of 2017, I submitted FOIA requests for the budget. I did not receive any reply for the police department budget that is submitted to the city budget office, okay? I did not receive my first document until January of this year. So, and not only that, but it was given to me in a PDF format that was unreadable. So you've, you've presented your budget, okay? But you're not allowing, FOIA's work because it allows people to see what you're doing. In a democracy, people have to have the right to see what you're actually funding and where it's going. I'm still waiting on the police department budget for 2019. I've paid for it and I don't know if I'll get it before your session ends. I hope to, maybe you could rush it through. It's, it's-
I believe it's online, sir.
No, no, it's not. Okay, so what I'd like to address, and that's the point, I have the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department budget for the years 2018, 2017, and I realize that your expenditures include, or the proposed expenditures include such things as Hunch Lab. Hunch Lab, Hunch Lab, it's predictive policing software. And, and the thing is, is that even with that software's own recognition, they recognize the developers that it doesn't decrease murder rates in the city. And the number one concern of people moving here is probably the murder rate. It's not because someone was robbed, okay? So what I would suggest, there's a number of programs that have been carried out through the United States. One of them is Richmond, California, the Office of Neighborhood Safety. Now, CAPCAR and OBS have been working very hard to find programs, okay, that actually would cure violence. And that's another program, Cure Violence, that actually is shown to work. That's right. And so, so I really think that we will sit down and do a lot of research for you. And we would like to see you seriously considering cutting the budget of the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department. By, by 1% and reallocating it into programs that actually reduce violence. Because your programs do not work. And I've met with, I've met with the interim Department of Public Safety and your current chair, I mean, the current Department of Safety, Judge Jimmy Edwards. And I hear repeatedly, like, the surveillance program is gonna fix everything. More cameras are gonna fix things, but it's not shown to be effective. Right? And so, this is a situation that you have to look and find real programs. If you don't, look, Chicago has more police than we do. If we just keep on increasing policing, it hasn't reduced their crimes, okay? And, and the thing is, so that's why, I had a discussion earlier, you can't just do the same thing and expect different results. A marginal, a marginal increase in the number of police officers is not gonna make a great difference in the number of crimes. It's a different approach that will work. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good morning.
So, we all know with all the people here-
Tell us, tell us who you are.
A little bit closer, I'm sorry. My name's Alex Johnson and basically here is a private citizen.
And you live in the city?
I do live in the city, yes ma'am. We all know with all the people here in front, at this table and behind me, in front of me and behind me, that a ton of time is being put into these issues and a ton of energy. So what I would call for amongst all of us, but particularly obviously the state, the power holders here in the E&amp;A Board, is that we look for smart solutions. Mr. Weeks just alluded to what other cities are doing. And one of the concerns, of course, we all have good ideas about how to spend money, but finding money is a good place to start when you wanna fund important things. What happens with the incentives, it's true that sometimes a big fancy project won't happen without tax incentives. It's absolutely accurate because it's obviously about their bottom line. But what we can do as a municipality is think about those tax incentives a little bit more strategically, that perhaps fancy project A won't happen, but a more modest project B might happen. And thus, in that manner, we would fund, not lose all of the tax funding, so still have development, which is very important for any municipality. But look at those projects citywide, from a strategic point of view, in a way that would maybe incentivize more modest developments, but still allow us to collect more tax revenues. The second thing that I think the municipality could do is facilitate collaboration among stakeholders. Mayor, you just said it, the municipality cannot do it alone. These problems that we're facing, systemic racism, that's part of the foundation of our country, homelessness, poverty, food and equity, those are enormously big problems that no municipality can do, no state, no federal government agency. So one thing that the municipality can do is facilitate the collaboration, honestly, simply by providing a space, a time and date, I think we can find, I will pay for the bagels. I will, I'm sure we can find people who would sponsor, but facilitate collaboration among the stakeholders, bringing together academic, medical institutions. We have phenomenal institutions here in the city, we're extraordinarily rich and so many intellectual and other resources, big business, small business, nonprofit churches, nonreligious, the St. Louis Ethical Society, private citizens, really just providing a time and a space for us to get that regional approach. Of course, we would want to invite as many county stakeholders because there are obstacles. We know that as soon as people start talking about city-county collaboration, oftentimes there are municipal legislative measures to prohibit precisely some of that integration. So facilitating solutions would be the next thing. Better zoning for tiny houses, for example, there's a big tiny house movement. As a municipality, we can facilitate the solutions. We may not be able to fund them, but we can get the obstacles out of the way. Giving away some of our LRA properties that are actually costing some of the money. Give them to one of these nonprofits. Let them collaborate amongst themselves to maybe provide some of the services that somebody who is homeless needs, some of the food, some of the medical assistance, et cetera. So facilitating those solutions, preventing foreseeable problems. Obviously, if we have a number of homelessness, and not to hit too hard on the nose here, Mayor, but if we shut down a shelter, we, those homelessness, that homelessness problem is not gonna get resolved without, it's not gonna disappear. So we have to have, when we take measures, we have to have a backup plan. What are we gonna do with the problem? And I think the city does respectfully take a lot of, make a lot of decisions and take actions without really having that backup plan already in place. Lastly, we all know that we're bleeding residents. It's hard to live here, to be honest. As a mom, I know that we have phenomenal teachers in our public school system, but it's, nobody can deny, obviously, that there are different resources in the county for schools. But it also is, my taxes are going up, my services are going down. Just take, for example, a car. Middle-class family that we are, we have two cars. I pay, by buying a car here in the city, higher taxes. I actually have a higher crime ra, rate, higher crime rate, I'm sorry. Concerns about schools and other services and I have to pay more taxes. My property taxes are going up and even if you wanna lease a car, which is not an option I choose, but if you lease a car in the city, you have to pay property taxes where somebody who leases a car in the county doesn't. And I do think those are the kind of measures that actually cut off our nose to spite our face. And there's so many people, going back to my original starting point, which is there are tremendous resources here, intellectual, cultural, social, economic, we have so many smart people in the city, that we can do it. I, I just think it's a matter of thinking a little bit more strategically. Thank you very much. Thank you, Alex.
Vanessa, Vanessa Cobria.
My name is Vanessa Cobrian, I'm here from Soulard. When I look at the budget, what I see is that the main concern is public safety. The majority of the budget, that's where it's going for. So I can see that, that that is where you want to have improvement. But what I don't see is money being allocated to address the root causes of crime. I don't see where the city is working with its stakeholders, with its neighborhoods, with its community leaders to address issues that are being handled on the home front, on the streets, and maybe are a little farther away here. An example of that is the cutting of the NSO budget. Perhaps that program could be managed better and perhaps it could be managed differently. But I don't believe that the answer is cutting personnel resources. We need more people with eyes who are serving as a conduit between the residents and you, not fewer. We need to use our resources that we have within the community more, instead of creating more of a, a break between us. Having these hearings at 10:00 on a Friday, I understand it has to happen, but how many people couldn't be here?
There'll be more.
So I would hope that there is more of a dialogue, especially before final decisions are made about this budget, and that there is an opportunity for neighborhoods to come together as a whole to offer input, instead of as individuals. And that does add more time and it does add a bit more resources. But I think that what you would glean from those community meetings would be so rich in diversity and an idea and maybe something that no one else has thought of. And if nothing else, anything that can be done to bring the residents together, so that residents are working together, will have an effect that it lessens crime. So if this budget process was more open and if there was more community involvement in the conversation, that alone could have an effect. And you might be able to lower the administrative costs in the public safety section and put them perhaps to NSOs or to homelessness or to many of these other programs that in and of themselves would have a beneficial effect on the public safety.
Good, thank you, Vanessa.
Good morning, members of the board. My name's Jerry Connolly, I live in the Shaw neighborhood in the 8th Ward. A lot of what previous speakers have mentioned, I'd like to echo, particularly the funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and allocating additional monies to bring that up to $7 million above where it is now. The transparency in terms of this whole process, I mean, I'm glad this hearing was posted a couple of weeks in advance online. Will you, as a body, commit to the E&amp;A as opposed to the Board of Aldermen? Will you commit to additional hearings at a, both an evening time and a weekend time for people who don't have the opportunity to take off work or be here as part of their work? My understanding of the city charter is that it doesn't have to be this one hearing. The, the E&amp;A Board has, has the capability to schedule more hearings. Is, is that correct? Can someone?
I'm sure it's possible. We are meeting our responsibilities today, but what we do have an obligation is to get the budget to the board by May 1st. And so that's the timetable that we're working with. The Board of Aldermen shall receive the budget by May 1st. But in terms of, of addressing some of the issues that have been spoken about today, I'm prepared to make a motion today, Madam Mayor, that would restore the NSO budget. And I know-
And I'll, and I'll second that motion, once you have it.
Okay, and let me explain, 'cause I am catching the mayor off, off guard. And I apologize for that, Madam Mayor, that's not meant for that. But what I would propose that this board would do, that the E&amp;A Board, would be to direct the budget director to go back and look at ways to restore it, along with whatever the Board of Aldermen would be working on. So give them time, because we only, the way our schedule is set up currently is to come back Monday and vote out the budget, which means it doesn't give the budget director time to put, to restore it. But what I wanted to be clear today, or to make clear, is that it is the will of this board that it be restored. And that's what I want to make clear and then we can work on some of the suggestions that we are hearing today, because we are just hearing them today. And the one is that we would, and I made a note, that we would reduce the police by 1% perhaps, to look at providing, you know, more prevention, which the NSOs do help with, you know, crime prevention. So those are things that if we're, if we have the will of this particular board to restore the NSOs, give the budget director the time to do it, work with the Aldermen, work with some of the community organizations and just get it done. Because what we all want to do is have our tax dollars work for us in the best way possible. We pay the tax, and therefore we want the crime reduced. The budget does show that we're looking at putting the money there. But what I'm hearing over and over is that there may perhaps be ways that we can organize it just a bit better, to serve the citizens better. That's what I'm hearing.
If I could just ask, so if I could just, if I could ask a question about your motion, are you suggesting that we cut police salaries by 1% or are you suggesting that we cut the number of police officers? Is that what you're saying?
I am not saying that. What I am saying is that the budget office put a really, a lot of time into preparing his budget and it is great that you put the time in, but we do have 12 NSO positions plus a supervisor, $800,000 reduction. You and I talked about this Monday, I don't like it. And so, we have an opportunity to relook, to, to sharpen our pencils, to clean off the lenses and go back in. Just dive back in and with the help of some of the comments that we're hearing today, the 1% I just got today, you know, so I don't have anything developed with it, but they're saying, "Look at the whole public safety budget," right? Which is 56% of the total budget. And so they're saying is, just look at 1%, there's tons of ways, with the help of the public safety director, with the help of the police chief, with the help of the community, you know, people who are willing. There are people who said, you know, this one guy, didn't you say you were volunteer? That you somehow you, well, anyway, there are people who will come in and will help. And I'm willing to hear from them. Paul Payne has been very famous in having neighborhood, you know, inviting the neighborhood in for community meetings when we talk about capital projects. So here's another one that you might consider, and Madam Mayor, you also mentioned that as well, is that, you know, there will be more meetings. Normally, they're held on the, on the Board of Aldermen's side, but we have an opportunity for our budget office to dive back in. Paul, and I'm, I'm hoping you're with me on this.
Yeah. Madam, Madam Comptroller, so I think that probably the best motion would be a motion for us to direct the budget director- to direct the Budget Director to prepare an amendment for the Board of Alderman.
No, that's not what I'm saying. See, you're putting it on the Board of Alderman. We need to be putting it on the Board of E&amp;A.
Oh, I would love to get it done by Monday.
That's what the citizens want.
I would love to get it done by Monday. That'd be awesome. That'd be awesome. If we can get it done by Monday, that would be awesome.
We're going to need all the members of E&amp;A, then, to figure out where we're going to make the cuts.
Well, here's what I don't want to do.
Because, you know, I mean, we can cut ward capital, demolition, affordable housing...
Everybody deserves a weekend off. So, I don't want to pressure the Budget Director to get it solved by Monday. But what I do want this board to commit with a motion, that I'll make a motion, that the proposed cuts to NSO, the Board of E&amp;A, would propose that the cuts to the NSOs be restored, and that we direct the Budget Director to work during the time period that we have to pass the budget, which is between now and June 30th, to make that happen. Is that something we can all agree on?
Conceptually, yes. Are we still going to send the budget over to the Board of Alderman?
We're going to send this budget. Is that okay with you all? We're going to send the way it is, but we will not pass it without the NSOs being restored.
Yes, yes.
I want to commit to that today.
Yes. Absolutely.
Is that... I mean...
Yeah, I'm great with that. We have actually a couple of options. We could move Monday's meeting and get it done before it leaves the Board of E&amp;A. Or, if we want it to be done after it's moved to the Board of Alderman, then I think the motion that would be appropriate is one, to direct the Budget Director to prepare that First Amendment at the Board, to include the restoration of the NSOs. Otherwise, it's possible that it will just sit there, and it will take the next month for it to come through.
I guess I...
Because we're going to...
Do you have an amendment of Mr. Budget Director that you're ready to propose today?
Thank you. Actually, there's a couple of things about this budget that we had to cut in order to fully fund. Obviously, you know that we didn't reallocate anything from the ward accounts this year. We didn't reallocate anything from affordable housing this year. We increased all those fundings. So, first, I mean, if you need, just to have a restoration, I mean, you would need something like 8.5% off the ward capital accounts, and we could do that today, or Monday, and get it sent over that way, and maybe then they could look at, review the budget of that process.
That's precisely why I would rather not try to do it today, because that's just robbing Peter to pay Paul. That's taking more money out of them to do it. But if we can, you know, have him work with the Ways and Means Committee, or E&amp;A, to come up...
And E&amp;A.
And E&amp;A, and E&amp;A, to come up with the appropriate cut, I think that would be good. That way, it's not just taken from one, it's not shifting money over from one pool to the other, and then there's no net benefit.
What we don't want to do, what we don't want to get is caught up in what will be cut. What we want to do is commit to restore. Because everybody understands that something has to be cut. Our, today, we should say, "We're going to restore it. Let Paul Payne do the work." Because he, I mean, it's a billion-dollar budget. I'm not going to commit to police salaries being cut. I'm not going to commit to anything. Paul Payne could dive in and come up with someplace else to be cut. And so, that's what I'm saying. So, Madam Mayor and President Reed, I don't want to tie his hands. I want him to be able to work with Ways and Means and others, as well as the community, to restore the NSOs. That's number one. Where the cuts are going to come from, I think that the agreement will come as he approaches those areas. So, he doesn't, we don't have to make, the only decision we want to be clear about is the restoration. So, I'll make the motion, once again, I move that we, as the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, would restore the NSO budget, the 12 NSO positions plus one supervisor, which is $800,000. I move that we would restore that in the time period between now, which is April the 20th, between now and June 30th. And in doing so, we send this current budget over as is to the Board of Alderman, but we know that we will not pass this budget unless the NSOs and the one supervisor are restored.
And...
That's the motion.
Yeah. I would agree with that, but...
But do you second it?
But I will, no, I will, I will, I will, I will second it. Hold on a second. I will second it. But it does count on where the money comes from, because if he takes $800,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, that still has not helped us.
I would say this, that everybody understands that the Board of Alderman reduces the budget, but...
I will...
So, I appreciate your second.
No, I will, I will, I will second it.
Thank you.
But I'm not going to automatically vote on the change if the change has taken money from another priority, because I would not support taking $800,000 off the top of Affordable Housing Trust Fund to make this up. Because they're...
What I have not, what I have not proposed, what I'm very clear about is not proposing reductions.
Oh, no, but I want to...
But I want you to understand that my motion doesn't include a reduction.
I know. I'm with you on, I'm with you on that. But I think it's very, I think we need to be very clear to the Budget Director that it isn't, it is not an automatic approval, and it's going to require diving deep into the budget and coming up with the funds from someplace else, not one of the major areas that we...
My idea really, I kind of caught on with what you guys said about the 1%. So, I'm on that track, in my mind. And I think that we need to be looking at that very closely.
Perfect, perfect. So, I would, I would, I would second, I would second the motion.
What is the motion here exactly? Are you, are you proposing to cut police by 1%?
My motion does not include the word "cut." My motion includes restoration of the NSOs. We have 12 NSO positions plus one supervisor.
So, you...
And I'm recommending that the Budget Director would take on the task of restoring the NSO budget between now and the final passout, which means that the budget we send to the Board of Alderman will still include these cuts, but it will not be the budget final pass, which means there will be a reduction somewhere that we would have been approved by the Board of Alderman. The Board of Alderman has to approve that.
Can I restate that? You're moving to that this board would vote to restore the $800,000 to the NSO budget, and that Paul Payne would provide us with some options? I didn't hear you say that exactly, but he would come up with some suggestions...
That we would give him time to do that. Yes, ma'am. That we would give him time to do that. In other words, we, the Board of E&amp;A, will be working simultaneously with the Board of Alderman. We'll both be doing the work. And between the time that we need to pass the budget out by June 30th, we will have a solution.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, we'll figure it out. That's, I mean, that's black and white. We're going to figure this out. Paul Payne, are you on board, Paul?
And can we...
Are you on board, Paul Payne? Yes or no? Our Budget Director's on board.
So, I think we, I don't object to that. I think we have to put everything on the table here, though. We just voted yes two days ago that we were going to, for sure, restore some money to the fund balance. So, maybe we'd have to reconsider that.
That's correct. We have to put everything on the table.
I don't want to do it, but I'm just saying, you know, we voted on one thing two days ago, and we're voting on something else today, and, you know, this all, everything has...
Everything has to be put on the table.
Yeah, okay.
Hold on a second. I want to be careful with it. Now, there are some things that I'm not going, I just want to be, in fair disclosure, there are certain things that I'm not going to put on the table. I want to make sure the other two members of the Board of E&amp;A understand this. If the motion, if the amendment comes back requesting a reduction in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I'm not going to support it, plain and simple. It's not going to happen. And I don't think the other members of the Board will support it.
No, we worked hard to get that money to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
If the, if the amendment comes back to cut the ward capital funds, which is the money that helps to shore up neighborhoods all across the city, we're going to have to go dive a lot deeper than that. And I'm saying that because after serving on the Board of E&amp;A for a number of years and going through this process, I understand intimately how the dollars are, how they're able to shift these dollars around to make it seem like a prettier picture to the people, and the people buy into it. But at the end of the day, the results, we see the same results, because nothing has changed. So, I would, I would support a motion to direct the Budget Director to put together a number of amendments to bring back before Ways and Means, and also to present to the Board of E&amp;A, right, that would, that would restore the NSOs, but not take away from some of the needed social programs and funding for homelessness, funding for youth, summer jobs programs, all of those things that they normally taken out of. So, I would support that amendment, because ultimately, that's going to be what I would support and vote on.
You're looking for options. You're just saying some of the things that you won't support.
Yes.
So, I think we have a motion on the table, which I believe is a vote to restore the funds to the NSO budget, $800,000, without a designation as to where those funds would come from, but with a direction to...
I can't support that. Because that's, that would be a blank, that would be, because ultimately...
But we can vote down his amendments.
Allow me to, because you did second it, so if I may, I don't want to take any monies from anything that's been restored. I do not support that as well. We did restore affordable housing. We did restore the monies to the capital for the wards. So, I can agree with you.
Okay.
But the people have given us a roadmap, and I have repeated that. So, I want us to focus on what they have. They said 1% out of 56% of the public safety, public safety makes 56%. Let's look at that 1%.
So...
That's wide and broad, and it does not include affordable housing. It does not include the ward capital. So, everything you're saying has nothing to do with what the people have said.
No, it has, it has exactly what...
No, 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 no. I'm not disagreeing with you. Can I have the motion?
Make the motion, so amend the motion, so amend the motion to say that he finds it from the 1% from the police department. Because then it's specific. Because otherwise, otherwise, what we're voting on is to tell the Budget Director to just go find $800,000 within this budget, and there's almost a 90% guarantee it's going to come from programs and services.
amend the motion to include the 1%
Take it from the 1%.
From the public safety.
All right. Second.
So, public safety, so that everyone knows, is police, fire, the building division, the NSOs are in that public safety money, and the excise division and corrections. Those are the departments... No, I'm just...
That's why I didn't want to narrow it, because we have other areas. We have general government.
Right.
You know, we need, we can look at general government.
I would prefer to leave it open.
We can look at general administration. So, if the Honorable President would not tie our hands and let us dive deep into the budget...
Well, here's what...
With the understanding that what you have stated here, that we agree with you. We agree with you, Mr. President. We're not disagreeing. We don't want to cut what people have worked hard to get restored. So, I mean, can a couple of women please have some say? I'm just going to go, hey, do it.
Stop it, stop it. Madam Comptroller.
Okay.
Madam Comptroller, here's what I'd say.
So, we have a motion on the floor, I think. I am not completely clear about what it is, except to find the funds to restore the NSOs.
And we need to do that work.
So...
Call for the vote, Madam Mayor, please.
And I think where that money is found, I think that... Yeah, maybe, pardon? Okay, I'm going to call for the vote on a motion which I believe says to restore the funds to the NSO office.
By when?
By June 30th. We'll figure it out by June 30th. Working with the Budget Director and hearing from folks. I'd like to call the...
Can I ask a quick question? Did we just pass a proposition in November to reform the public safety? Is that simply for pay raises for the current employees and the...
You know what? As soon as we get this motion done, we'll, we'll talk about that. It's, yeah. Okay, so, all in favor of restoring the $800,000 to the NSO budget and figuring out where that comes from by June 30th, say aye. Please call the roll. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
That doesn't come out in like two minutes, does it?
No, no, that does not come out of your two minutes.
Your two minutes, we blew through that.
It does not come out of your two minutes. But just, just as, I just want to make sure that it's noted again that we're asking that there's a deep dive into the budget. And if indeed the amendments come back, that shifting, that begins to shift money from one thing to the other, and taking money out of a needed program or service, I am not, I want to make sure everybody understands, I am not, absolutely not going to support it, period. Because I think that that would be more of the same, and we need something different. Thank you.
Jerry, wrap it up.
Well, another thing I'd just like to highlight is, you know, there's a department like the City Council's office, I believe has got 122 staff, and I'd like, in terms of the budget scrutiny, to ensure that the departments who put forward their budgets have that number of staff, and that they're not putting in for more staff than they actually, you know, have on board currently. Because that's a substantial sum. Again, just to reiterate, I'd encourage you to, this body, the E&amp;A body, to have, you know, at least one other hearing in the evening time, and one on the weekend, so that two additional hearings, to allow for public input, and the advertisement for that not just be on the city's website. Yes, it should be there. It should be on Nextdoor. It should be posted around the elevators. But there needs to be partnership with neighborhood associations and different forms of outreach for the folks who, you know, aren't able to be engaged or don't hear about this process. The Board of Alderman has lots of drama, and a lot of that's good, but I think we kind of realize that this body is where some of the real key stuff happens. And down the line, I think we need to reform in terms of how the budget process occurs so that can be more public engagement. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Who's next?
Shirley Demay. Hello, I'm Shirley Demay, a business owner, resident in the 9th Ward in Marine Villa. And I think we'll all agree that crime has gone up. There's problems between the police department and the residents, or whatever. They have a feeling that there's police brutality, which we all admit, there may be some, a small percentage, but the majority, I feel, is very good. But I also consider our NSOs a buffer between that police department and the residents and business owners. Because I know my NSO, Barb Potts, goes out of her way, takes her own time, and comes out when she's not even being paid for it. Because it is like her love to help people. It's not just a job. It's not like, and I shouldn't say a police officer, but a person that's on the paycheck, and when he's clocked out, it's over. He goes home. She lives with it 24 hours a day, is my own opinion. And it's my understanding that, you know, the population is declining. I think we all agree, it's declining because we do have a crime issue here. People are living, are leaving. People aren't coming. We've got the conventions aren't coming here. We've got concerts that aren't coming here because of problems that have occurred due to this situation. And I would think that we would need more NSOs, and I believe the President of the Board has also said that. Board has also said that. And then you today, Mayor Cruson, I think you stated that, what was it? We need to, stated the priorities need to be taken care of, and we need to cut out somewhere else. Well, there's something we've been talking about cutting out for well over a decade. I don't know how long. I've had my store in the city since 1991. And we are always talking with the population decline that we need to cut the Board of Aldermen. But it's kinda like a conflict of interest if the Board of Aldermen are gonna cut to cut their own jobs.
Well, you know, the voters already voted for that. That's happening right after this next census, unless, unless it would come back to the voters again. The Board of Aldermen's gonna be cut from 28 to 14 in 2022 or 2023, and the...
Why do we have to wait when we've already got an overabundance of all...
The voters voted on it. It was on the ballot.
Well, it may be something to reconsider again, because what I'm seeing, I call my Aldermen and, you know, we've had meetings where one lady complained, she called 12 times and he never responded. The voicemail would be filled, or he just wouldn't return the call, and he said, "Well, you should've called the office." She said, "Well, I did, six times at the office, six times on your cell phone." And he said, "Well, I don't return calls unless I know, I recognize the number."
Well, that's something you have to take up with your independently elected Aldermen.
And then, when we do call and ask for help, or we do see and say there's a problem, could you contact the police? His response is, "Call the NSO." Well, if you take the NSO away from us, what happens?
Yeah, well, but these elected officials, you know, we have to, we have to deal with that through elections. You know, the people, the people vote. And the people voted to reduce the size of the Board of Aldermen. There is a...
Well, if there's a need, a greater need right now, like you said, we have priorities.
You do.
And we have an admission, there is an overabundance of the Aldermen. I really feel we don't have enough NSOs, because they do a wonderful job.
Great, thank you. I think we just voted that we're gonna try to restore that.
I realize that, but I'm saying we probably need more, that could do more to help keep the crime down.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning. How are you? Mayor Cruson, President Reed, Comptroller Green. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. The main part of my presentation today, you have addressed already. I happen to live in the Fountain Park community, and I work with the Fountain Park Lewis Place Community Organization. And I was here to speak for Mrs. Chavette Wayne Jones and the extremely difficult at times, but very good job that she has done, really echoing Holly Hills and others who have spoken to that. And thank you so much for addressing it, addressing it now, and seeing now that they are so important between, what is my second topic, and that is community safety. And I don't wanna put the, flood you out with another issue, but a part of what Chavette does is that important job of bringing us together as a community in terms of our safety, whether we're talking about dumping, or we're talking about homes and business establishments that have brought crime into our community. And the Citizens Bureau does what they do, but sometimes it takes a while, and sometimes it, there are other issues or whatever that seem to be priorities, and we are left out. And again, the, our community stabilization officer just really is important to that. Speaking of safety, I've actually, I'll leave a hard copy here, I will not go through everything, but I do wanna say that I've shared some information with both, I keep wanting to say Judge Edwards.
That's what we call him.
Yeah, okay.
Once a judge, always a judge.
Right. And also with our Chief of Police, Hayden. It has, you talk about money and where to get it. Well, one of the important ways, and several people have kind of touched on this too, is to maintain our population. Many years ago, and I know this wasn't officially passed, but we've seen the way the city worked with the Team Four, to make sure that it's appeared. And scholarly and research has shown that, and as well as the US government investigating the city of St. Louis, monies did not get to St., to North St. Louis. And it led to a lot of problems that we experienced and we are continuing to experience in our community. We are on the road to make things much better. And a part of that, a big part of that are our housing and our public safety. I have, I looked at the budget, I didn't get a chance to get online until last night, so I didn't get a chance to look at everything. And it's wonderful, in some cases, that buildings are coming down. But since most of those housing rest in North St. Louis, before taking a building down for the sake of just taking it down and leaving it looking like a bombed-out part of Europe during, after World War II, well, it would be better to take a look at some of the architecture and abilities of those buildings to be reused, to be sold to individuals. And I'm sure that there are many different plans that could address that issue. But I'm also a historian, a retired teacher, and I appreciate the beauty and architecture of our buildings. I jokingly, but sincerely, talk about my cousin who thanked me for my, the bricks she has in her home in Houston, Texas, because she and her husband wanted a brick home. They're both a Midwesterners. And they got the bricks, they're pretty sure, from our area, because it's the good bricks. It's the whole bricks. It's the bricks you can't get anywhere. And they paid a premium for that. And so we need to address the savings of those, of those things. The last couple of things have to do with the safety in our community, and this deals with money also. I don't know where you're gonna get that money, but one of the things that's important is that in St. Louis, in my general community and in the places that I travel, in both South St. Louis, where many of my family members live, and West St. Louis, and then into St. Louis County, are a huge number, and I do mean huge, because I watched it grow, of paper plates. And people are literally bragging that they have never, never had metal plates. They park on my street, my neighbors and I have...
License plates?
The license plates. They used to be stickers you put in your rear window.
You said paper plates, and I was...
And then, now there are paper plates that you attach to where the license plate should be.
Those are the temporary tags that are only good, I think, for 30 days.
Well, I would, I would invite you...
I hear where you're going.
You, you can come to my home and, and look on my street, you can look on as the cars pass back and forth. They are flying all over the place. The person who was bragging, and this has been a little bit over a year ago, but they also don't have plates yet, that, you know, they don't have to pay, I guess they have to pay their initial sales tax, but they don't pay anything to the city of St. Louis.
Pay the sales tax either if they have temporary tags.
Yeah, well, that answers that question too. However, however, and I'm putting myself on Front Street a little bit here, I delayed paying my personal property taxes for my car this year because of some other things going on in our home. And I got a summons and had to pay, and had to pay a lot more. So in other words, the city mayor's a really good job of taking care of people who do the right thing. And I would like to see some efforts at taking care of people who are skirting through. And I've been in a tough place too. Married, then death as a widow, and as a single parent, the money got really tight. But I understand the difficulties. And then lastly, the, as you make your adjustments to the budget and looking at public safety overall, the role of our police officers in our community is not only just being on the streets, but it's responding to us when we call. We can help the police, and will as citizens of the city of St. Louis, when at minimumally, when we call because of situations, there's someone there. Keeping our stabilization officer will help in continuing keeping that bridge, and maybe that's will be another place that we can work together. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak and to hear the voices of the citizens as you make your decisions.
Thank you, Margaret. We appreciate it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
To the Board of E and A, Mayor, Comptroller, Board of Aldermen. My name is Pamela McLucas. I'm a resident of Lewis Place in the 18th Ward. I'm also a member of the SLACO Vacancy Best Practices and Prevention Subcommittee, as well as a board member of the Hamilton Heights Neighborhood Organization. And I came this morning, excuse me. First, I wanna thank you for the motion, Comptroller. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. And thank you, Board, for voting this morning to do so. So I came initially to speak to the neighborhood improvement specialist being cut. Obviously, that's not needed. But I will speak to Chavette Wayne Jones, who is a tremendous asset to our community. She comes out to all the meetings. I see her at the Lewis Place Preservation Meetings. I see her at the 18th Ward Committee Meetings, and she comes with a thorough report. And she is completely accessible. We thank her for her email blast. She is very committed to her job, as well as the other NIS agents that are. Now, my, my concern is, there are some who are not as productive as Chavette and the others who have been mentioned, and perhaps that's a personnel issue. I'm also here to speak to the vacancy, because the NIS staff, they are the boots on the ground. And as we know, this week, just this week, just Tuesday, we just attended a press conference and a workshop addressing the vacancy in the city of St. Louis. And Mayor, I want to thank you for the conversations and your diligence to assisting us and helping to bring our city back to life by first addressing vacancy, which has not thoroughly and accurately and appreciatively been done historically. So we thank you. Just to point out, even in the booklet, as a tool, we have the Neighborhood Stabilization Team as the first mention. They are the ones who are helping with public safety, making sure that the alleys are clean, helping people to identify vacant properties, making sure that people know where to call to get services for the community. So I just wanted to, to speak to that, because it was very disconcerting that there were proposed cuts to that, to cut them out. Finally, with them, they are going to help address our tax base, because people don't wanna move into the neighborhood. And I come as a real estate professional, who knows firsthand how difficult it is to sell a city property, not only because of the vacancy, but because of the value of the house and the devalue and the depreciation of the homes. And so with these steps, with the Neighborhood Improvement Specialist, perhaps we can continue to move in the direction that we want to have our city come back to life and have our tax base increase. And then we can get more people to come, our schools will be better, we'll have greater voices in our neighborhoods. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Hello, my name is Bren Holmes. I am a resident of St. Louis City for my entire life, which is 40 years. I'm an activist. I think a lot of people here are activists, because it just means that you're active.
We are too. We ran...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm also a founder of a non-for-profit organization. And as, I came here about the NSO, of course, but that issue has already been heard and responded to. What I've heard overwhelmingly is that the things like affordable housing and the services that go directly toward the constituents are the programs that we wanna see. What I heard over and over again, and I'm in agreement with, is public safety would be a good part to look at as far as cuts, and particularly the police department. People try to lump the fire department in with the police department, they try to, I mean, I know that they're all in there together, but when you have an emergency, the fire department is usually at your door within two minutes. Nobody has a complaint against the fire department for decades. The fire department is stellar. So to lump the fire department with the police department is unfair. I know that they both fall under its public safety, but the other young lady alluded to that in certain neighborhoods, when you call the police, they don't even show up. So we just voted for Proposition P. I was against that, because there is a lack of transparency, there are some things in the police department that need to be straightened out, the two different unions, for example. There are a lot of things that need to be shown, to be improved for the residents. So that's why I think that the police department needs to kinda get its act together, kinda clean up its own house, you know, while it's trying to go out and, because on the north side, we're over-policed and under-resourced. A lot of people do not wanna say black, white, race, this, this, and that. It's just a fact. There is a racial disparity. And so if you are not, and if you're not giving more towards the, the areas that need it, as in the squeaky wheel getting the oil, as in if I'm a mother and I have two children and one is special needs, I'm gonna give more to the child with special needs. I'm not gonna starve that one and put all my eggs in the other bag, because he's gonna be successful and I'm gonna be a great mom. No. You have to, for, for our city to be more attractive to outside people, we cannot have where you go across Delmore and it look like you in Baghdad. We can't have that. So, you know, it, I don't know, I'm not a financial person to say, well, this or that, but I know that the services that are completely going, directly going to the citizens, you know, that don't have to go through a lot of different changes, those are services that are benefiting us. And the last thing, I was, I was at St. Peter's AME Church, and Reverend Shepherd, the churches responded to opening their doors because we had fatalities of unhoused people that were outside. And so we were there, you know, cooking and housing and feeding, you know, the unhoused, because people were just like, "Well, I got a vacant house over here, maybe some homeless people can stay in there." But St. Peter's had to close its doors because of lack of support. And I, I recognize and I realize that you personally, Mayor Cruson, you did, you know, donate to support the church. However, the church still had to close its doors, and those people still had nowhere to go. And so I think that what, just to sum up what everybody said, is that it's not that we don't wanna pay taxes, or that we don't want police and we don't wanna be safe, that's not it. It's just being more efficient, moving St. Louis into the 21st century, like being more, being better with technology and getting the information now. Transparency is key, because we wanna see where the money is going. And I think that your office has done a great job in informing the constituents what's going on. And I think that's a reason why it was more people here than usual. And it's gonna be more people in the streets. It's gonna be more people, because until we have a city that we want, that we love, that the only city that we know, we're not going anywhere. So that's all I have to say, but I would say specifically the police department, not the fire department, not the NSO. Now, we don't have to guess, the police department is where I think the cuts need to come from, and they need to be accountable. Thank you.
And I apologize, I don't, I can't read the first name, but it is Smith, I think it's David Smith. If there's a Smith that signed up to speak. If there is a Smith that signed up to speak. Matt Goodman.
Hi, Board of Aldermen, Mayor. Thank you so much for your time today. Question first. Permission to film you live on Facebook?
Sure, it's a public meeting.
Awesome, awesome. All right. So my name's Matt Goodman.
Who?
What?
Are you on too?
I'm on too, yeah. This is, this is all good. All right. So my name's Matt Goodman. I'm the founder of an organization called Smilocracy.org. And I was just- What?
We met before, you work with Lois Severin.
I do. That's my, that's my smile partner. It's good to see you again, Mayor. I actually have a few pictures of you on here.
Good. Am I smiling?
Of course, of course. So, yeah, I mean, I've got stickers for everyone here. I'm here today because I was recently nominated to be a board member of the Continuum of Care. And they invited me here today to speak on behalf of consumers, on behalf of homeless individuals themselves who are experiencing the system and going through the struggles of trying to get their, get on their feet into a job and into stable housing. And I have lots and lots of thoughts, and I want to keep this pretty quick because I want to make, really, this is an introduction to a much larger program that my organization is working on. But I really, really think it starts with one person. And basically, I want to say from just my point of view that I want to take a lot of pressure off the city. I think you've faced a lot of heat because you're trying to solve this huge macro, macro issue. And it's complex, it's hard. Yet I've, I'm experiencing homelessness myself and I know, and it's a very, very long story, I know it starts with me, not you. And I brought my, my, my really good friend, Shrek over there, who's, who's in a similar situation to mine, even crazier. And he has experienced the system firsthand. And I think he would serve as an amazing, amazing case study for you to understand some of the problems that are going on. And I think if we fix the system for one person, I think we, I mean, that's, that to me is an entrepreneur, I mean, it's like a beta test. And, and it's, it's like a program. And I'm a program. If we fix the program, my program and his program, going through it, then we can fix it for a lot of people. So the program I'm developing is, is the Home Path, and I'll have a lot more, it's Home, Homes is an acronym for Homeless Outreach Maximum Engagement. And the idea is really simple, to engage a homeless person like myself or Shrek as supportively, lovingly, positively as possible. And it takes a whole community to do it because he's on the streets every day interacting with everyone. And, you know, if everyone just cared, cared, I think that would, that would be it. So, yeah, I know we're talking about budgets and money and all that stuff and, yeah, it's, it's everything, it is everything. I want to figure it out for one person, just the money for one person. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I got smiles for everyone and I look forward to sharing more with you very, very soon. Thank you. And thank you, thank you for inviting me.
I could use a smile.
Yeah, can I give you all smiles? Oh my God.
Yeah.
All right. Here, take them all.
Barbara Martin.
And that was our last speaker.
Okay, I want to just-
Hello, how you doing? I'm sorry, I'm not Barbara Martin.
I was going to say, I think I've seen you before.
Yeah, no, no, I'm the same person. I, since she didn't show up or she left, the one thing that I was going to say is, what, what is standing out to me in this budget is that Health and Human, and Human Services is 0.3% of the budget. And I think that's a problem. I don't know, I mean, I know that y'all got to find 800,000, but it's a major issue that Health and Human Services, it has the lowest amount of the, of everything. And so that was the last thing that I wanted to say, just if somebody could look at Health and Human Services.
Thanks. I just want to say thanks to all of you for coming today and appreciate your comments. And there'll be, there'll be more meetings, they'll of course be posted on the city website as well as around the building. So thank you all for being here today.
I move to- I move to adjourn this session of the Board of E&amp;A.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.